Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence afterward. A moment of silence for our first responders and those deployed. And another moment of silence, please, for Tom Summers, past council veteran and pretty much a legend in New Freedom. Thank you. Yes. The Director Schaefer is going to lead us through the budget discussion.
All right, good evening. So it would be easier if I was out here, that way we can see everybody and pull anything up that we need to, as far as QuickBooks and any other information that you'd like more details on. So just to start off, just a reminder, as far as the budget calendar, the December meeting is when we'll look to approve the budget and the tax ordinance or resolution. You can utilize a resolution if there's no increase or an actual decrease. If there's an increase, then that needs to be done by ordinance. That would push back the required 10-day inspection until December 1st. So looking at that and looking at if there need to be any additional meetings, that's the timeframe they need to occur in. Obviously, it can be pushed either way. Going into the budget message, I'm not sure what the consensus, the council, if you'd like me to go through those pages, if everyone had a chance to review them. If you'd like to dive into, write into revenues. Everybody had a chance to review the budget message, then? Are there any questions on that?
Quick question. So if the tipping fee goes up, that's part of the contract. We thought they can raise their rate, then, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And that's the same with all haulers. They're not going to absorb a tipping fee increase, especially over a five-year span. And this is one of the largest increases that they've seen. But unfortunately, and I know I shared the letter from Penn Waste, but with York County Solid Waste Authority, looking at a possible landfill that's maxing out capacity, and they need to look at other ways to dispose of even everything that goes to the incinerator. You still have the ash that needs to go somewhere. So it's a pressing problem for all of York County. Fortunately, they need to raise rates in order to look at other options.
On the water fund, well one, the council had authorized that maybe 8,000. I believe it says 30,000 there is all of those three phases not going to be done until '24?
No, that was just the remainder of what council authorized. That's all dependent on how far we get yet in '23 and how much billing occurs. So that would just be a carryover of those engineering fees or professional services fees into '24. Other questions on the budget message?
On the printing expenses in '23, the expenses exceeded the budget due to the creation of quality-of-life tickets. How come the quality-of-life tickets exceeded? I mean, how many tickets did you print?
We had the minimum order for those, I believe, was 500 tickets. Obviously, it's not a one-time expense, but it's a pretty rare expense to produce those tickets. They are costly because it's, in theory, it's a three-part carbon copy ticket with an envelope that the violator gets to send back to find in. So it's kind of a complex printing. Moving on to the budget summary, which is right after the budget message. This is just a quick snapshot of what we're looking at for 2024, showing all the funds, showing revenues, expenditures for the year, any surplus or deficit, and then backing into that available fund balance. The lines below that relate to your fund balance policy, which basically says we need to keep 16.7% of all of our revenues, all of our annual operating revenues, back as reserves. So that represents three months of operating revenue. So we have to keep that in reserves at all time. Any assigned fund balance would be anything that we have held back for projects or for capital expenditures. So you'll see that there's money held in those line items in the water, the sewer, and the rec fund. Those dollar amounts relate to money that was paid for tapping fees or recreation fees. All right. And then that last line item is just your emergency repair fund, which are dollars held back in excess of your committed fund balance. Questions on that? All right, moving into your general fund revenues. If it's okay, we'll just go in every subsection. If anybody has any questions, feel free, rather than go every single line item. So the first section is your real estate taxes. Again, this budget was prepared with a half mil increase, so that is reflected in the numbers for your review tonight. Any questions on that first section of line items? Okay, the next section is your Act 511 taxes. This is your transfer tax, your local, I'm sorry, your earned income tax, and then any amusement tax that's collected from NCR. Those earned income numbers do fluctuate a little bit, and we're still trying to grasp, get a better handle on that coming out of the old financial software as far as breaking them out, making sure that they're properly allocated to current-year earned income and previous-year earned income. It's a little bit of a balancing act between those two figures every year.
That 7,000 for the amusement tax, is that accounting for giving them back? Or is that everything that comes in?
That does include money back. And you can see that, that was based on the total 423. That's still up for council's determination every year on what actually gets returned, but I'd rather have that number realistic, what we're looking at for '23, than to over-budget for that.
What would you anticipate that to be without a return? The gross instead of that?
Yeah, you're probably closer to 20,000. Again, that's all dependent on their activities and their participation and how much council returns to them.
Oh, of course, sure. Gives a little bit better idea.
Okay, the next section is license and permits. Your biggest contributor there is your cable TV franchise agreement, which is 4% of all the revenue that Comcast brings in is paid back to the borough. That's remitted quarterly to the borough, and it's really up in the air. I mean, people change their subscriptions, some cancel, they add, so it's really market-driven.
In general, does that seem to be going up or down? Seems like more people are cutting the cable.
Going down, yeah, yeah, agree. More people are switching to subscriptions outside of paying for that hard-line cable service. And this is just on TV, so this is an add-on.
Right, that's not the internet, no.
Yeah, all those add-ons, yep.
It's actually funny, because I spoke with them today and told them I wanted to keep my bill down because my contract is expiring, and they suggested Roku and smart TVs. Comcast.
Okay, it makes a difference. I switched two of my TVs over to Roku Firestone.
Okay, next section relates to fines. This is any money that we receive from the district court, as well as the clerk of courts in York County. Next section relates to interest earnings. Obviously, with the rise in interest rates that we've seen over the last year, this has grown substantial in all of our funds, especially where we're holding larger balances, such as sewer fund, water fund. We were able to take advantage of those higher interest rates and redistribute some of the money into higher-earning accounts, which is definitely reflected. And just to pull up the actual right now. Yeah, we're over 23,000 right now, so even surpassed what we're estimating.
You really think 10,000 is, we're going that low?
That's... No, it's definitely a conservative number, but the concern there is, while the interest rates don't seem to be drastically dropping anytime soon, if they do, again, I'd rather have that number a little on the lower side and hit it.
If not, that goes back into the general fund.
Correct, yeah. Next line item is all of your leases. So this is for property that's owned by the borough. You have the Comcast property, Verizon property, People's Bank property, and then obviously the other half of this building, which is lease. Any questions there? Okay, page two. Line up in there is your state shared revenue. This is all your PERTA taxes, liquor license, pension allocation, and the foreign fire insurance, which is a direct payout then to Rose. Money in, money out, basically. Same with the pension.
Why is the DCNR grant zeroed out?
That was for the, that was just for the study. So if there would be grant money that would come in to pay, that would come into New Freedom, but in theory, go to the recreation fund.
The 65,000 goes to the rec fund?
Well, the expense would come out of that then, too. But again, that's not going to be received until, one, we actually hire somebody and start payroll.
Anywhere in the budget do you anticipate that 65,000 coming in?
Not at this point, but we also didn't put in the expense either. So if it would come in, it would be...
The expense is in the backup here.
Right, but it's not part of, that's just a supplementary budget. The open space grant, that is the remainder of the other half of the Marge Goodfellow feasibility and master site plan. That was the $15,000 grant for that project. Inter municipal shared payments. This would be any fees that we bill out to Stewartstown for BCO and UCC, as well as providing any services to other municipalities for inter municipal services, and then any workers' comp reimbursement for the fire company and EMS. Next section relates to zoning and subdivision fees. So if we do receive subdivision land development, we're billing that out for engineering fees, and then that has to come in on the revenue side. So again, money in, money out. Any questions on that section or the public safety section as it relates to building permits?
Do we take into consideration the new construction down with Constitution? I guess it's, what is that, R&amp;W, 34 Housing?
No, no, because there, at this point, there is no, there's no plan that has even gone through a formal review. It's only been, in theory, a sketch plan, and there has been no update from that developer for months.
Even if it started now, wouldn't even...
I think it wouldn't go until next year.
Not next year, but the year after.
Okay, page three, revenues. Any questions on that page? It's pretty short.
What's the 95,153 for the special event proceeds?
That would be for Smoke on the Rail.
But the, after all the expenses, wasn't that event $3,000 or less?
It was, as far as net incomes, like 39.
And was all of your time taken out of that that you put in planning out of that?
No, no, it's 40 hours.
And all the other borough employees that work the whole weekend?
Any labor was indicated in that that was paid out.
I don't know that that was a profitable event, and that's going to happen again this year?
Next year?
In '24.
Okay. In what thesis?
That we're holding an event that likely has a negative cash flow, and I don't know that people coming in from all these states is really a benefit for our community.
Okay.
You don't think that the businesses make out from that? Vortex was busy every night that they were there, so it was...
CR, seven.
Seven, they, it helped with our business economy.
How much do the citizens have to contribute out of their pocket for that?
Nothing, we made money.
We made $4,000, and that was still...
No, he's talking about his salary wasn't even taken out of that debt of that 3,000 or so. So I don't know, I'm just bringing it to light that...
He probably put in 60 hours that week. And I think he probably only got paid for four years. True statement?
Or like 90, but yeah.
I was planning that a bit on the night, the evening when he's supposed to be working here. Just putting that out there.
Well, it's a Saturday, isn't it?
No, I'm talking the whole planning, the whole planning, how much, no, that's what I'm talking about. Somebody paid for his time, it was the citizens that paid for the time.
There was no additional money spent by taxpayers. $4,000 was the profit. It's the first year, the $4,000 includes the purchase of all the equipment, which was authorized by council, which was $9,000. That equipment will not have to be purchased again for 2024, so automatically, the profit will go up $9,000. And you don't really expect that you're going to make a fortune your first year, but your second year will probably be better, and it'll probably be better the third year.
And if it goes that way, it would be 13,000. You know, it's a great event, I think, for the community.
And park contributions, expecting 35,250 for '24, when there was only $435 for this year?
Yeah, the 35,000 is the other allocation from Burkentine to pay for the feasibility study.
That was supposed to be the pavilion that we don't get?
Correct.
Paying for the study? So in your budgeting, miscellaneous revenue, what is that 13,000 for '23 for?
Yeah, the largest item in there of that 13,000, the money from Shrewsbury Borough that was paid to New Freedom Borough for the radar speed signs, that money went into miscellaneous revenue. So that's the reason that number's kind of inflated for '23.
Oh, that was where we went together and bought four instead of two and got a discount.
Correct, yeah, that was...
We cut the purchase orders, so they reimbursed us.
That was almost $6,000.
There's a general obligation note for, I guess it's been paid for, there's no expenses for that?
We're in revenues.
Well, it says general obligation note proceeds of long-term debt.
Right, that's a revenue.
On the, so there's nothing coming in? So '22 was, what was that, 1 million in '22?
That was for the Franklin, Main, and Constitution Avenue water, sewer, and roadway projects and sidewalk. That was part of that 2021 general obligation note.
2021 obligation note, so that's...
Other questions on general fund revenues? Moving into refuse fund revenues on page four. Does anybody have any questions?
So we're going to have to add that 16,000 to these numbers here?
Well, again, this is revenues, so...
I'm just keeping ahead.
Yeah.
But we'll have to add that, because that letter that we just got in here is not going to reflect these numbers.
I had already figured it when we received the initial notice from York County Solid Waste Authority. I went back and pulled the refuse tonnage from '22 and multiplied it out at $7 per ton, and it came out to 15,000 something. So that figure is already included in the expenditure for '24. Any other questions? All right, stormwater fund. Obviously, this is a newly created fund, not a lot of activity in it, so this is just catching any revenues from the processing of stormwater permit applications and any fee-in-lu-of charges. So again, this money is held in a separate account. This will be used for any stormwater conveyance system project upgrades in the future, which we have quite a docket of projects that need completed, so... Okay, moving into the water fund. Again, interest earnings, we're well over the estimated total already for '23, and we've still got, we still have two more months of interest earnings to post. So we will exceed that number for '23 and most likely exceed that number for '24, but just trying to keep it in reason. That also reflects in the user fees. We'll be well over that 1,40,000 number for '23, but just trying to keep it in check and make sure that we hit that number for '24.
That 700,966, was that a gift from the '21?
That was the final draw of the 2021 general obligation note. And we'll be able to utilize those funds through the process with the well one upgrades if council authorizes moving forward with that project.
It's required, correct? That's a required project.
Correct. Correct. Any other questions on water fund revenues? Sewer fund revenues, page seven. Again, as we noted, the interest earnings. As far as the user fees, these are all reflected for the other member municipalities in that proportionate share report. That'll be updated after the beginning of the year, but just rough numbers of what we include in the budget every year. That does include a portion of the upgrades, the improvements at the treatment facility.
That's for phase one?
Correct.
So Shrewsbury Borough is jumping up by over 400,000, so that's where it comes from?
That's correct. The only variable there is we don't yet know if we were awarded the grant from Commonwealth Financing Authority. That grant was around $1 million that was applied for. So the hope is that we're able to get that money and reduce that expenditure.
Will it be split between all the users?
It'll be split based on their portion of capital improvements, which is different than flow-based.
Yeah, I guess that's one way to say it, or you could say that they will benefit from the grant based on their proportionate share.
Based on their proportion, based on their allocation in the proportionate share report of capital expenditures, yeah.
Is there a timeline for when they'll announce that?
They were supposed, it's, Commonwealth Financing Authority meets only a few times a year, and almost every time that they meet, they reschedule. So I believe they're supposed to have a meeting in mid-November, so it's sometime soon. The last meeting, I believe, was supposed to be September, and it was postponed. The last meeting, I believe, was supposed to be September, and it was postponed.
And what was the ten thousand in revenue anticipated this year?
Estimated through the end of the year, that would be for the nutrient credit, sales and nutrient credits that we process every year.
Why would it go down to only five hundred in twenty-four?
That's based on availability and the ability to sell those credits. That market changes of what we can sell those credits for, depending on its supply-demand. And we can't guarantee that that's gonna even be a possibility. So we need to keep that number just minimal.
It's all fairly super easy.
Right.
And these loan proceeds of three million again, or from that twenty-one draw?
Yes. The sewer fund was the only one out of the different funds that received proceeds that did not receive proceeds until this year. So the general fund, we needed that money immediately. And the water fund, we needed that money to supplement that project in twenty-one.
What about Shrewsbury? Doesn't Shrewsbury reimburse us for a portion? Is this after their reimbursement for improvements to the sewer?
Yeah, that's shown in line three sixty-four, one-ten. That's that one point one million, and that includes the capital project.
That's where it was looking. New Freedom, and I, I don't know why I thought Shrewsbury paid a lot more than that. That's only twenty-five thousand dollar difference. How do we split that?
Well, the operating expenditures are split on a flow basis. The capital expenditures are split on a percentage basis that was done.
Agreed on?
Yes. Ninety-three?
Yeah, it was. That was when the authority was still in.
So that number is a combination of both operating and capital expenditures, reimbursed for those expenditures on the revenue side.
Why does New Freedom no longer have borough authority being Mike Hamilton overlook uses our sewer? And other municipalities that do not have municipal authorities that oversee that?
The authority, my understanding is the authority was dissolved after the debt was paid off for the treatment plan, which is normal. So it's basically a, there is no authority at this point.
Yeah, it was disbanded.
Like Shrewsbury has an authority, but.
It's a choice. I mean, it just adds another layer to your office.
The, the biggest reason that an authority is created is when it's serving large areas outside of other municipalities and an authority has ability to borrow a higher debt limit than a borough does.
They can issue a bond, too.
Well, we can issue a bond, but it, it has a higher dollar amount. That's usually why an authority is created.
If there's an expansion, would there be a reason, again, to initiate an authority? I'm talking about, I guess everybody knows we're looking at possibly Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township and having to expand the plan. Would that be beneficial to have an authority at that point?
My initial response would be it would be beneficial for an authority to be created and expand upon the existing one, which is Shrewsbury Borough Authority. It already includes those municipalities that are being served, so.
By Shrewsbury, okay.
Correct, yeah. But it really wouldn't make sense for New Freedom to be, become a part of that.
No.
Anyone else have any questions about the numbers?
Hey, recreation fund revenues? I believe the rec council did have a chance to review this at their last meeting.
Yeah, they did talk about one more item I don't think would have been on here, because this was printed before that meeting.
Correct.
I don't remember what the, the total was, did Mary get that, too?
I believe there was an addition of an expenditure. That was parties, I believe, that they wanted to include, a thousand dollars for parties.
Yeah, I believe that was the number that they'd come up with. Similar to what they had, that we talked about last month.
Does this get changed once we have the cooperative started with Shrewsbury Township? Will all this be changed? Or will those revenues go over to the Coalition Rec?
Correct. Yeah, any, any, anything at the time when that's changed over would be going into the commission.
The rec board now?
Yep.
Right, okay.
Because they would have the expenditure as well.
Isn't there another? It's not a revenue, but I guess it's in savings. I keep remembering, like a sixty-five thousand.
You're, you're talking about the rec fees that's held in a separate account. There's an operating account, and then there's a recreation reserve account, and that's for any recreation fees that were paid by developers. But that money is specifically held back for the use of improvements at facilities. So that can't be used for your day-to-day operating expenditures.
At New Freedom facilities?
Yes.
Or would, it wouldn't go in the new board?
No, it would not. It can't. Any other questions?
Veterans Day revenues, did that include the contributions that were made by, like, the VFW and a couple of other? Now, I mean, it's not a whole lot of difference.
Yeah, I, I believe that number from the proceeds that they were able to bring in will be much higher.
Yeah, it was like four hundred dollars, I think, of just from Veterans Day dinner.
That was a great dinner, by the way. The.
That was excellent.
Sales from one year to the next, but it was just, everybody said it was fantastic. Really appreciate that and get that back.
Yeah, a couple of, maybe a couple of changes next year to keep the line down. It's like everybody hit all at one time.
But we had a burger.
Yeah, had to have a burger lane for selling raffle tickets and the other two. Great event.
Okay, moving on, capital reserve fund revenues. Again, these are transfers in from the other respective funds into the capital reserve fund for vehicles and equipment for current and any future purchases. And that follows the schedule that was approved by council when that fund was adopted. Any questions? Highway eight fund revenues, again, pretty straightforward. Any questions?
The Shrewsbury Township turnback, is that one street?
Yes. Any other questions on that?
We don't get anything back from Shrewsbury Borough, or is it so minimal that it's not even worth? Has then part of that road go through Borough? Doesn't it, doesn't it go all the way out to Mason Dixon? Which one are you?
Talking about which road he talked.
Constitution?
Yeah, yeah, out Constitution, going all the way out to Mason Dixon Restaurant, right? There's, if there's a weird line, it's.
That's part of the state turnback.
Okay, all right, there's no involvement with Shrewsbury Borough.
That Shrewsbury Township is a completely separate agreement.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they receive, they receive a portion, we're basically receiving a portion of their liquid fuels for that section of roadway.
How long has that agreement been in place?
Two years?
For township? Sorry, I should have clarified, the, the Shrewsbury Township turnback, how long has that been in place?
Uh, the nineties. I think when we pulled the agreement, it goes back pretty far.
Does that ever, what are the, what's the term on that?
Expired?
I don't, yeah, I don't think there is a term. Okay.
Then there isn't a term for the state rent compensation? Is that a contract for so many years?
That renews annually.
Oh, it does annually, okay.
They're, they're never gonna wanna cancel it, and they can't get enough people to do the rents now.
Yeah, they never wanted to approve it, and now they're never gonna wanna cancel it, yeah. We worked hard to get that.
Part, part of the thinking was that Borough wanted to make sure the street got done. They didn't wanna wait for Paddock to get out there to clean up part of the streets and get all the way out of town. I think that's why, another reason they brought in it.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions? And the last, last fund, as far as it relates to revenues, Community Center Fund. Basically just catching your room rentals and leases.
Are you gonna remove the lion's room rental? You can't rent that room, can you?
Well, that will still be rentable, it just might not be to the lions. It just.
Well, the, the agreement, that lease agreement just says that they'll make a contribution. It doesn't say any amount.
Currently, they're not using it.
Well, that's the first line, the donation, the second line is the room.
Right, but that's for daily rentals.
Right.
So somebody rents the room from us, the lions aren't using it necessarily.
Or has a reception up there, we've had several receptions up there at different events. They use the lion's room because it has the kitchen.
It's not them at all.
Correct, that's just.
No, that's just been named the lion's room.
Yeah, the lion's room is.
They weren't meeting in there.
They were, they're not any longer. They're meeting out at the scout house because of some health problems that they were coming across with some of the chemicals and the, just in, what is it? Yeah, this, yeah, right there, the Cintas things. We had several that were very allergic, had COPD, emphysema, and it was basically sending people to the hospital because they just couldn't tolerate it. So they moved out to the.
Only temporarily.
What, you're only moving out of there temporarily now?
It's up for discussion in our meeting. It was only through December.
I mean, I know we had a problem, we had several key members that were talking about leaving if they had to keep putting up with it, and that's not something I don't think we wanna see, because those are key members that just happen to have a health problem, the existing conditions, and I hope we can talk about it. Maybe there's something that can be done.
Any other questions?
Andrew, will be, right here, when, I'm just curious here, it says we're about tasteful occasions. The revenue there, is that gonna go up next year?
It's a two-year lease.
Yeah, it was a two-year lease, yeah.
I'm just curious, I wanna make sure I had that right in my head.
Any other questions? Anybody have anything in revenues they'd like to go back to?
I gotta, I gotta take a look here again at recreation. Room rental, auditorium and kitchen. Now, is that the upstairs kitchen? Because apparently in tasteful occasions lease, we're not.
Correct, that's their space, we do not rent their space.
Gotcha, okay, so that's what, that would be for the upstairs kitchen.
Are we ready to go into expenditures? All right, moving into general fund expenditures. So this is expenditures, page one. Again, we can go through the different sections if you'd like to. If there's any particular questions on a page, please let me know. Going down through these sections, there's no large changes, even in the tax collection. So the tax collection subheading includes commission to the tax collector. That includes any fees that are basically taken out of proceeds from York Adams Tax Bureau for collection of your earned income tax. And then any other fees that we have for the tax collector if she needs supplies or any subscriptions or training or anything. Moving into the law section, this is for codification. So any new ordinance that's adopted by council, along with an annual subscription fee, gets paid to General Code, and that makes sure that the, everything's updated for the public-facing site.
Yeah, under the codification, the difference between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, is that because of the number of issues that were found that needed to be corrected, or was there?
Yeah, there were, there hadn't been an update since twenty-twelve.
That's, okay.
So we, we had to go back through from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-one, which moved into the expenditure in twenty-two.
Under office, the salaries for all employees, I would like the salaries broken out, not lumped together in one amount.
Would you like to see that in a separate document, or?
Nice.
That could be an addendum, I don't think you want line items for each person.
Individual salaries.
In an addendum, right, but not in the.
Wouldn't that have to be done in executive session?
No, the people pay the salaries, the people should know what the salaries are that they're paying.
I just thought it's a personnel issue.
It's public.
Yeah.
It should be posted on our website.
I don't know of any other municipality that posts salaries. I don't think that that's appropriate, but I think it's available.
Well, that's why I was saying...
It's available to the public. Public can request and see it, but I don't want it posted on the website.
Is that something that the rest of the council would like to see as far as a separate addendum with that information?
I'd like to see it, but I don't know if I'd like to see it shared in a public meeting. I mean, you're going to have to, I mean, if they do a right to know, you're going to redact so much of it that...
Why? If the citizens pay the salaries, why shouldn't the citizens know what salaries they're paying?
Well, there's more involved in that than the people that you have than just how much each person makes.
With the complete compensation package. Citizens should know. I should know.
They're hourly, what they make. Each make hourly and yearly.
And a compensation package. Yes.
What are you referring to as far as compensation package? Are you talking about breaking out individual benefits for disability and health?
Sure, whatever the, like the rec director, we were told all along, it's $60,000. Well, and here, it's really starting out at $113,000 when you look at the compensation package.
Okay. Again, you need to determine if you're going to talk about salary or you're going to talk about benefits. What you just asked for was salary. Now you're asking for benefits.
I clarified it was compensation package, so the whole enchilada, the whole enchilada.
Okay. And the rest of council?
So I don't get to know if they don't want to know?
No.
I never said that.
He's going to have to print.
Why is it funny?
Well, because I asked for it, and you do things that the rest of the council wants to. Then the decision's made if they want to or not. I'm just trying to clarify if that's what you're doing.
I'm not sure what you're getting at. There's, again, as it's been indicated, it's public record. There's nothing to hide.
I think, yeah.
It's why I asked for it.
When?
I haven't been given it to them.
When?
It's public knowledge. I think if you request it, it would be given to you. And I think we need to, from an HR standpoint, make sure that listing names besides salaries, I mean, you can list a job description. That would work. You could say, you know, treasurer makes this amount, receptionist makes this amount. That would be, I think, okay. But if you start attaching names to it, I think that's a problem. So, but I don't know that for sure. So I guess I would ask the solicitor or someone from HR to tell us that that's okay to do.
What does the solicitor say?
Yeah, that's accurate. It's not, the salaries and the budget are based on positions, not on people. So you can have a list of, you know, maintenance worker one, maintenance worker two, maintenance worker three, what each of their salaries are.
Correct.
Not any identifying, oh, that's Joe Smith, or that's John Doe. That's what I've been used to.
Yeah, and that can absolutely be part of the budget. That's not a problem.
So you could make, what, eight copies? That way we're all... You make eight copies of that and we're all...
Yeah, not a problem.
I don't have a problem putting an addendum in the budget to show what each class of employee makes and what their compensation package is. Might get us some people to apply for jobs in any field.
True. All right. Other questions on the office section of page one?
I'm sorry, yeah, I just had, why do we think that engineering fees are going to drop?
There's nothing budgeted as far as projects. Really, the only project that's being budgeted for next year is some money out of Highway 8, liquid fuels, about $100,000 for street projects. So other than that...
If they had a plan review, we'd be reimbursed.
We'd be reimbursed, yeah.
Now, what if we add something to the list?
If you add something tonight, or you add something down the road and consider a project, yeah, it would be an increase for the expenditure of that project, as well as any engineering fees associated.
Personally, I'd like to see the municipal parking lot repaved. We're still working on chips. That's chipped and, what do they call that? Tar and chip, and they went over it with a roller, and that's what we have.
Unfortunately, there's quite a few parking lots and Borough and facilities that need addressed, but...
Can you get us a list of those so we...
I'm pretty sure those guys sitting behind me have a list already.
Oh, I'm sure they do. I just know it's the ones that I see, and I know that's never been paved.
Right.
And we're asking people in the wintertime to utilize that. We're having a lot with NCR. We're having a lot more. Things happen at Marge Goodfellow. We're grateful we have to park there. And I think it should be, you know, presentable. As the Borough?
Yeah.
That's just by two cents.
Okay. Any other questions on page one? All right. Moving on to page two, general government and buildings. Just a lot of utility, repair and maintenance. You can see that on line 409373, that's maintenance of the building. The reason that number is basically so far out of whack is we had the office roof replacement project that carried over into this year, as well as one final payment for the public works facility. So that's why that number is basically $100,000 over budget. It was carryover from previous year.
Do we anticipate any problems that are going to come up? Something on the edge of becoming a problem?
Not at this point. Not in...
Community center or...
Well, yeah, that's accounted for separately. But as far as this building and the public works facility, no.
And the generator, is that listed somewhere in this for next year? Or was that put in this year?
For the community center? The one that we...
For the fire department and the community center. I understand that one's shot.
It's mostly a grant.
That, yeah. I mean, the hope there is that we can obtain that grant, which was $54,000.
That should cover almost all.
That's 100% funded.
Oh, that's great.
As long as we get it, which I think we have a good argument for, and we had a pretty strong grant application because it serves the fire company, the community center, which is emergency shelter, the senior center. It's a pretty good argument to make sure that that's operational. Other questions?
Last time we talked about the increase in police. And Erica, did you say you didn't think it would be what's shown here? The increase, the change?
No, it is 10, 15,000 less.
I think we were about, it was 762, I believe was the number.
762, 976, 763. There's still some...
It's not finalized.
Yeah, because that's not a definite...
No, it's not finalized.
It's not finalized.
Better have a little too much in there than not.
Was there an anticipation on when that would be finalized? As far as getting it plugged into our budget?
Finance is waiting on the 16th.
You can drop it to 770, but leaving it where it is, it's probably fine.
If we don't use it, it goes over into the general fund. Well, it is the general fund, so...
Is there a consensus on council where you'd like to see that number?
I think, personally, I think it's fine the way it is. I'd like to see us have wiggle room.
Well, 10% is like 8K. If you add 8K to what you improve as a council, that puts us at 770. That's why I threw out the 770 number. It would give us a 10% cushion.
Doesn't mean we're going to spend it, but keep it in case.
You want the most realistic budget you can. I think that's why we're... That's my view.
Okay. Moving on to the fire section. At this time, would you like to discuss the EMS?
Sure. I made up a little sheet. Just hopefully that we could all be on the same page. And this, this is actually, if somebody can distribute this to the public, some of you are all talking.
There, we got you.
And then I've got copies for us, too.
Well, everybody has a copy of the letter from Shrewsbury Township regarding EMS funding. And just a follow-up to that, Shrewsbury Borough also approved last week that funding for increased EMS coverage.
Yeah. Is everyone up for it?
I think we all have one.
You have one? Everyone has one? Okay. Okay.
Rise.
So I think what we're really looking at in this section, we're looking at expenditures as it relates to the fire company, expenditures as it relates to EMS service and their need for basically increased allocations.
So looking at just the EMS portion, that's the center section or the last item on here, which is Rose EMS. You can see that the total New Freedom Obligation is $75,200. And that was derived by coming up with the budget for EMS. And the drivers on the EMS budget that are not funded, I mean, obviously, they're funding a huge portion of this by grants and billings and whatnot. But the portion that's not funded is increases to salaries for paramedics, EMTs, and hopefully some EMTAs, which is an advanced EMT that can actually administer drugs, start an IV. You can correct me if I'm wrong at any point. So anyway, so the total budget came, that they came up with was $360,500. It is not funded by the billings or grants or other things. This also includes a new chassis for an ambulance. It also includes the seeds to start a chase truck so that whenever we need to call 911, we can get a response. It was broken out by the five first due townships and boroughs. And what that means is when you call 911, Rose is called up first. They're the first ambulance to be called. So it basically came out to, Cadore's Township was 4% of the calls. New Freedom was 21%. Railroad was about one and a half. Shrewsbury Borough was about 30, 31. And Shrewsbury Township was 43. So Todd has been working a lot with this from Shrewsbury Township, and he put together a chart for us. And our portion would be 75,183. And that includes the $23,500 that we're already giving to the fire company. So the new obligation, as shown on this chart that I handed out, the new obligation is $51,700. Anyone has any questions to that point?
Are we sure about that was percentages? I thought New Freedom was closer to 15%.
No, if you took the, he used a three-year average.
Oh, okay, the three years, okay.
Yeah, it was 15% for part of last year. Actually, it was 15%, 15.8% through August, I think, is what they had of 2023. But if you use a three-year average, it's, which is probably what we'll be doing in the future, too. But it would be about 20.1%.
So for clarification, there would need to be another $50,000 programmed in line 411501 for 2024.
Right.
Approximately $50,000.
Would this be the proper time for someone to make a motion for an EMS tax?
Um, well, I would think, well, do we have any other discussion before we get that far? I mean, is everyone...
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot that needs to go into that first.
Right.
But, you know, just as you're looking at that, we know that there's about a, there's a $75,000 need for Rose EMS. And as far as our assessed value of properties, what that equates to is about .2 mils. So if you're looking into initiating a potential EMS tax, that would be pulled out of that general fund millage. It would be approximately .2 mils at rebate, which would generate $75,000.
And for this to go through, I don't know, I don't think you mentioned that. Shrewsbury Township made it very clear that they're going to make their donation based on the fact that each other municipality also meets an obligation based on calls.
Correct. That's what, that's what...
Abby, Kurt was going to...
She went to Shrewsbury Borough? She's back there.
Kurt was going to check. But I think, I think what we said was that Shrewsbury Township would be on board if the three major players were all on board.
Yeah, he's still waiting to hear back from Railroad and Cadore's.
Right.
But Shrewsbury and Borough also...
Shrewsbury Borough and Shrewsbury Township have both approved. Shrewsbury Borough approved $109,800. Shrewsbury Township approved $155,775 to further budget for this year. And what they're asking is for New Freedom Borough to approve $75,183, of which 23 and a half is already in our budget. The balance has to be allocated.
Shrewsbury Borough did it without raising taxes on the people.
They took it out of the general fund, is what you're saying now.
Shrewsbury Borough has not raised taxes in 10 years. They did this without raising the taxes on the people.
Well, they actually haven't approved their budget yet, so they don't know what they're going to do at this point.
I was at their meeting.
I talked to Mike Sharp. He said they have not decided yet what they're going to do. They're going to try to take it out of reserves, but they haven't approved their budget.
They haven't approved it, and that was what Chalk did increase.
What Shrewsbury Borough does has to do with everything what New Freedom Borough does, but...
I just think we need to make sure that Shrewsbury Township knows that we are going to do this. That's why S should we vote? That's why S should we vote on it, to let them know so that they can finalize their budget, too. How we're gonna approach.
Separate, we're in the budget. Shouldn't that be separate when we talk about the EMS?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Well, we're in the fire right now, so I'm not sure. That's why.
I think we need some kind of consensus from council on how to program those funds. If we're including the seventy-five thousand dollars in that line item, obviously it's amended to that budget. Then we need to figure out how we're funding it.
I think it shows the public where their tax dollars are going, that they're, this is going to support fire, and this is going to support your EMS. And if they have questions, they can ask, oh, well, why? You know, I, I think they need to know why we have to do this. And that shows it's not just a general tax increase along, you know, the border that we all said, oh, yeah, let's raise the taxes. No, we've got a good reason to do it. And that's, to me, is an explanation by passing an EMS tax.
And it's separate, like the fire tax is separate?
It would be absolutely separate, so it would not.
You're talking about the half a mil like it's in there, but it's separate.
It's separate. By law, it's, we're allowed to do, what is it, up to five, and we're only doing two. Most other, most other municipalities that I've talked to and talked to about it at conventions do it as a separate fire and EMS tax.
To give, just to give you an idea, the expenses for twenty twenty-four for Rose EMS is one million eighty thousand dollars.
Move your mic over there.
Did you hear that?
No.
One million.
Move your mic and turn off.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget about that. The expenses for Rose Fire Company for twenty twenty-four are, is one million eighty thousand dollars. So we're basically, New Freedom Borough would be not even covering the eighty thousand dollars. So all that other money, they're asking us to cover three hundred and, as member municipalities, they're asking us to cover three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of a one million eighty thousand dollar budget. And their payroll is about half a million dollars, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, I believe. Somewhere in that neighborhood.
And kind of going up because we need to keep people, and when they can go to Rutter's and get a job behind the counter for the same price as they are running on an ambulance, something's wrong. So I think you've taken that bull by the horns and tried to help with that by, by raising payroll for certain levels, paramedics, EMTs, correct? And that's, we have to. We can't go through a new person every couple of months. You get them trained, and they're going to Wellspan, or they're going to UPMC.
We have a, we had a study, a DCD study for EMS, and they actually recommended a, a point five mil tax for EMS, which is not realistic. But the bottom line here is that they also told us the number of companies that are going out of business. And the company, number of companies that, you know, one of our, one of our fears, I think one of, one of Rose's fears is if we went with someone like Wellspan and said, okay, you guys send your ambulances down and you take care of us. If Wellspan doesn't make any money or doesn't make enough money, they'll just say, yeah, we're not going to do it next year. And then we're sitting here without any, without any EMS services, EMS, so.
And we've got certain municipalities that are paying, I think for a paramedic, ninety-six dollars an hour. They're paying a hundred and fifty thousand, okay, just so they have coverage because they don't have the volunteers.
You, you are, we as a, as a municipality, and you as, as the public, and me as a potential patient, are much better off having EMS in-house in our, in our area as opposed to contracting it out to third parties.
And the chase truck within that, because I don't want to have to wait to check this if I have an emergency.
Yeah. And we'll have, we'll be able to run one or two ambulances, plus the chase truck will be stationed at Shrewsbury Borough Fire Hall. It'll give up more coverage, it'll faster response time. It's, it's a win-win for everybody. And as a no by the way, just as a no by the way, I don't like tax increases either. I mean, I'm on social security and a fixed income, and, you know, this tax increase is a hundred and four dollars a year, but we need to support fire, police, and EMS. I would entertain a motion to add the EMS to the budget in the amount of, a total amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred, which represents a fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollar increase over twenty twenty-three.
But you said, you said it was a two mil.
It would be a, a point two mil.
Point two mil.
If you initiate a separate EMS tax. Now, just keep in mind, there are a lot of changes that transpire then by initiating that. So obviously, you're looking at a, a new line item in revenues. You're looking at increasing that four eleven five oh one. The other thing it does is it changes the balance of that fire service donation. Because in the past, we're pulling that fuel out of that. So I guess the question.
That was Rose Fire's choice to pull the fuel out of the fire tax and give it to Rose EMS.
EMS. Right. So the question lies then, are you going to allocate fuel out of the EMS tax?
The fuel, the fuel that we give to Rose EMS, which amounts to about twenty-one thousand dollars, I believe, was paid for by Rose Fire. Todd took the twenty-one thousand dollars in fuel, and he included it in the total allocation of three hundred and sixty thousand five hundred. That fuel is in there. So basically, it would be paid by Rose EMS, because we would be giving them the money, and they would be giving it back, and they would buying, be buying the fuel from us.
So it would be a reduction of their tax.
Correct, yeah. However, we wanted to do it on paper, that's fine, but it would be a reduction, yes.
Are they getting their own EIN number, whatever number?
I believe Kurt is looking at splitting the EIN so that there are two separate entities. I think it, I think that would do a lot for, just from a standpoint of donations and what, who you were giving your money to, to make sure everything was separated. I'm in favor of them splitting their EINs, but there's a lot of paperwork involved, and I'm, you know, will it happen in six months or a year? I don't, I don't know. I don't think that that's key to, to supporting them at this point.
Well, make that motion until we can have a discussion on this.
Okay. I think we've been discussing. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
So this would take it to the, from thirty thousand to seventy?
From twenty, from twenty-three five to seventy-five two.
And for clarification, your motion is just to program the expenditure at this point?
That's correct.
Not, okay.
Not do it as an EMS tax? Well, we could look at that, but I mean, as long as it's a separate line item, I would be happy with that personally. I mean, I just, your, your guys' call, though. I mean, I'm not sure what, from a technical standpoint, what all you have to do in order to make it a tax.
It would be, it would be an ordinance.
So it would have to be advertised.
Yeah. It would be advertised as part of the budget, though.
Okay.
In, in conjunction with advertising the budget for public inspection, advertising the tax ordinance.
So it wouldn't be any additional work. It would just go with it. And I would, I would make the mo, I would amend my motion to have it be a separate tax.
Well, so Todd did, anyway. I, I, a second. I have a, on that one.
Questions? I will open it up to the public. I know we haven't had public comment yet, but, I mean, this is obviously a major issue. Does anyone have any comment or any, anything anybody wants to say?
How much is the tax going up? Half a mil plus?
The half a mil would, again, I, I think we have to get to the end of the budget, but right now, what we're proposing is a half a mil, which would include the police, fire, and EMS.
So it would just be the half a mil and the EMS would come out of that?
That, that would be my belief, yes.
Okay.
Well, I thought you said we need two per, two mil.
Well, I, I believe, I mean, you have to take into account, you're dropping, you're, you're funding that twenty-three thousand now with that point two. So you have to take into account the change in general millage. So I think what you're saying is, is it would be point three general millage increase and a point two EMS.
Exactly. Well, we haven't approved that yet, but yes.
But the other thing is, we need to go back through, and we're, I mean, we're not even halfway through our expenditures yet, so we need to go.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah. If, we would have to go back through this whole process and, and put those numbers in and see how that's going to impact the surplus or deficit.
That doesn't make sense. You're proposing a half a mil before without the EMS tax. And now you're saying that the EMS tax is part of that half a mil, but you weren't saying that before.
I gave you the sheet. The sheet shows that you have a hun, you have a point five mil tax increase. Out of that point five mil, thirty-four percent of it is covering SRPD costs. Twenty-three percent of it is covering Rose Fire, and twenty-six percent of it is covering Rose EMS. Now, what you would do is, since we're only covering the fifty-one seven out of the point five total, you would bump that up a little bit to cover the seventy-five two, but then you could decrease the general fund tax. So the total net tax would be point five. Any other discussion? Oh, yes.
So on the paper you handed out, it shows it's about a hundred and four dollars, and then it's eighty-four dollars, and that is going to fire EMS increase.
That's correct.
There was, Shrewsbury took it out of the general fund. Is there any way that New Freedom can take it out of the general fund?
Well, our, our general fund at this point, I mean, we have not, we've not co, we've not increased taxes to cover SRPD police increases. So thirty-four percent of the money is, is just going to cover past and current police cost increases. And so I guess the answer to that is, is no. Our general fund is depleted to the point where we need point five or some combination of a fire tax, EMS tax, general fund totaling the point five.
Now, I'm still learning.
Okay, I just want to ensure.
I got, I got a question is if, if the other boroughs haven't raised taxes and they have a general fund to pull from, what happened to our general fund?
Well, we don't know if they've raised taxes yet. Their budgets have not been completed.
Well, so far from the, from what I've been able to see, like with a lot of the breakdowns, there hasn't been any tax increases in like, I think, Railroad, Glen Rock, Shrewsbury. But we have, which I understand, but if they have a general fund and haven't raised taxes, where, what's happened? I, I guess I'm not.
They preferred to do it as a donation in the past. Now with the increased money that they're going to contribute to EMS, we don't know. That's their privilege and right to either do it one way or the other. My personal feeling is if we do it as an EMS tax, on the bottom of that tax bill, it shows exactly what you're paying for. You're paying for fire, you're paying for EMS. They need to explain it to their residents that that's where it's going, but this way, it's very succinct, and you can see it at the bottom of your tax bill.
Go ahead.
We must be reminded that Glen Rock is not raising their taxes, but they are reducing their police coverage.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah, to, to three hundred thousand.
That's kind of what I'm trying to figure out, is how, how do they have a general fund without raising tax, tax? They're reducing their police coverage. Shrewsbury? Nope.
No, Glen Rock.
But, but Shrewsbury hasn't raised any.
I, I don't have, I mean, in all honesty, I'm not really not, I'm not trying to be smart, but I do not have Shrewsbury Borough's tax. I don't have anything in front of me from Shrewsbury Borough. I don't represent them.
I was at their meeting on Wednesday night. They had over a million dollar shortfall. There was no discussion of raising taxes. I was there. If they were going to raise taxes, they would have said they were going to raise taxes.
Well, then, then you, that begs the question, then, if they have a million dollar shortfall, they can't pull it out of a, a magic hat, so.
They're going to balance their budget.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have a balanced budget.
They put money away. It was, it was overcarried, but they have.
You're not allowed to do that.
Well, that's going to catch up.
That's going to catch up quick, yeah. You're not allowed to do that.
Ten years in a row, they haven't done it. So the twenty-one drawdowns, over six hundred thousand dollars. How are, where's the money from that coming from? Is that coming out of the general fund and all, in the individual funds? Is that why we have nothing in the general fund?
That twenty twenty-one general obligation, the funded project, the project and other projects that were already in motion during twenty twenty-one, and part of that was general fund, part of it was water, part of it was sewer. There was an anticipation for water projects that needed to be completed. There was anticipation of the phase one project that needed to be included, completed at the wastewater treatment plant. The reason that money was borrowed from the general fund, well, not borrowed from the general fund, but allocated the general fund was to pay for that project. There was money spent on that project that there was not cash on hand to pay for.
It's coming due now.
The debt services, that's correct.
Services are coming due, and that's why we have no money to be able to pay for these services.
You're talking about a three hundred thousand dollar debt service, that's correct, out of the general fund.
When you add in the others, it's over six hundred thousand.
It, when you add sewer and water, absolutely.
It's like six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. It's, it's up there, so.
Now, some of that was a refinance from twenty twelve, but yes.
So we don't have the money available to absorb this like our other boroughs do because we took out those.
You really need to stop saying that. Glen Rock, Glen Rock doesn't have the money to absorb anything. That's why they cut the police services.
I can say all day long, I was over at Stewartstown this month, ten years in a row, they're not raising their people's taxes.
Their taxes are two point eight five. They're already higher than ours.
They're not raising taxes on their people.
Because their taxes are already higher than ours.
For the tenth year in a row. Shrewsbury's not.
It's not a contest. It's not a contest. We are trying to come up with a balance.
I noticed a lot of homes for sale around our borough, and maybe it's because people can't afford their homes anymore. Our taxes have went up by like forty-three percent in the last four years under this council.
Here, here.
It's just tax, tax, tax. We, out of thirty-six boroughs, we are the wealthiest borough out of thirty-six borough. And in the last five years, we're number ten on millage increase in five years. It, there just needs to be an arrest in the spending, and I just don't see it.
Okay, then I, I beg the question, then, would you like to give up police, fire, or EMS?
You, you are placating on this, saying it's, it's EMS, it's EMS, it's, it's this, but really, when you look at it, it's these debt services that we took out and are coming due to provide the next twenty-five years.
The Shrewsbury Borough has a debt service. You know, the Shrewsbury Borough has a debt service too. They have a pen vessel.
Well, you know what? Back, back to that, they're able to fiscally be responsible with their money and not raise their taxes every year.
Are they? Because we have to beg for the sewer money every quarter. And they're always late.
I'm showing that Shrewsbury is at two point one-two of their twenty-twenty-three tax rate, and we're at two point twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
Two point two eight?
Two point one-two is Shrewsbury's twenty-twenty-three tax rate, while New Freedom is at two point two eight.
Point two eight relates to the fire tax.
Fire tax.
Well, it's all lumped together as a tax rate.
Yes, it is shown on that paper, all lumped together, but it's broken out on the tax bills.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to do here is figure, should we include that in the overall tax or explain to people where their tax dollars are going to fire EMS, et cetera?
Then again, we modified the motion to include the-
The people would assume that their tax money are going to that already.
I'm sorry?
You would assume that your tax money is going to that already, not a separate tax. The taxes they could pay, you would assume that those services being provided would be a part of your taxes.
Those services, sir, let me give you, let me give you an example of what their expenses are for twenty-twenty-three. The expenses are seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That does not include what they need for new equipment. They have an equipment wish list that they really need, that is probably another three hundred thousand dollars. That's a million dollars that they need. They don't have it. If they don't have it, but they need it, they have some money in the bank, savings, investments, spend it, they're done. They're out of money and they can't meet payroll. Then what happens? Then we're responsible for four million dollars to pay for EMS. I don't want to see that happen either.
But did we need a ninety thousand dollar valve turning machine in lieu of putting the money on EMS?
All right, we're not, we're not-
It's not in lieu of, this is a separate, a separate item for the valve, valve.
If you want to, if you want to talk about the valve turning machine, I think I told you earlier that Public Works is saving us a hundred and ninety-three dollars a month, or a hundred three, a hundred and ninety-three dollars a year each of us in Waterville.
Oh, God, yeah.
So, so Public Works, the savings on, out of Public Works is a hundred and ninety-three dollars per home. That equates the three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the year. This savings is greater than the total Public Works payroll. They, in addition to doing the water, they do the snow removal, so EMS, fire, and police get out fast without waiting for a contractor to come do the snow. They run our water system. They do the infrastructure, stormwater, they help with the sewer pipes, leaf pickup, street sweeping. Well, you've seen them, you know what they do. So those, that's what they're, that's what they're doing. And so when they need a valve turning machine that costs, wasn't it sixty thousand?
Eighty.
Eighty. But at any rate, if they, if they need that to do their job and they're saving us three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars a year, I think they should get their machine that helps them to do their job and keeps all the valves healthy.
I have an idea. There's an eighty thousand dollar vehicle in here, another work truck. How about we don't do that and that covers the EMS tax, so we don't have to put that on the shoulders of our citizens?
But we already-
Well, that's out of the capital reserve.
We already put money away for that, right?
Correct, yeah.
We put that away every year.
But, yeah, and I think we gotta take a moment here and get back to the section of the budget that we're in.
I agree.
Which is fire and EMS.
We have a motion table, there's a chance to blow it, honey.
Making a motion to call the vote?
May I restate the motion?
Say again?
Restate the motion.
Motion is to institute an EMS tax in the amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars, twenty-three five of which is covered currently in the general fund, so it would be a new obligation for taxes of fifty-one thousand seven hundred, and that would be as a separate EMS tax. That was the motion.
And-
Say again?
Go ahead.
We are sure that you will not look at this budget to get it elsewhere.
Well, we are looking at the budget to get it elsewhere, but I think right now, what we're, we haven't, this still has not been approved. Even if we pass this motion, it just gives Andrew the authority to update the budget. We haven't gotten through everything yet. I mean, for instance-
I think what you could do, instead of setting it up as approving EMS tax, what you, what you really want to do at this point is add that revenue to that line item. That's all you need to do. You don't need to figure out how to pay for it yet, because you're gonna do that at the end of the budget, when, whenever things all laid out.
Okay. Well, that's kind of how I started, so I'll, I'll amend my amendment and I'll say that we're going to have a fund, the seventy-five thousand two hundred, which is an additional fifty-one thousand seven hundred, funding this TV game.
I'll amend my second.
To enter up for me.
All right. Any other discussion?
Let me clear, this is not an additional tax, it's just a breakout of what we have, is what we're trying to get to.
No, that's not true. Right now, if we, with the current budget that's in place, it would be a point two mil increase to taxes.
No, no, I don't, I don't think that, I'm sorry, I don't think that was the motion. The motion is to program the seventy-five thousand dollars of expenditure, and then as we get through this process, we'll determine-
I like that, yes. I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
So we're gonna program the money? I agree, that's a good way to do it.
But there's, at this point, there's no, an additional tax would need to be discussed at a later time.
Correct.
Correct.
I just, I want a motion.
No. Want to read it back?
I just have notes.
Okay, so, so the motion has been made to fund EMS in the amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars and program the funding into the budget. Still second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Does that work for EMS?
Okay. Any other questions on that fire and EMS section of the budget?
Can I ask you another quick question before we move on? Could you please inform Todd and the rest of the EMS committee that council is funding seventy-five thousand two hundred for EMS?
Will do.
And could you also have somebody change the clock back there? Oh, I didn't, we get two hours already.
So Patty, are you ready? Do you want to go ahead? We're gonna take a short break. We're not leaving. We're going to invite the Lions Club up to make a presentation.
Don, I'm gonna get you up, everybody up. Do you want to sit down? I'm gonna ask you guys to come, kind of stand here so we can get you on record, because we do- Myself and council has asked that Andrew draw up a resolution of respect, recognizing ninety years, we're a little late, but we couldn't get you guys here the last meeting, and I wanted to do it here at council. Whereas the New Freedom Lions Club has been a steadfast pillar of the community, dedicated to serving the people of New Freedom, Pennsylvania for nine decades. Whereas the New Freedom Lions Club was founded on the principles of community service, volunteerism, and a commitment to make New Freedom a better place to live. Whereas New Freedom Lions Club, through its unwavering dedication and tireless efforts, has made a profound impact on the community by supporting various charitable causes, organizations, and individuals in time of need. Whereas New Freedom Lions Club commitment to improving the quality of life in New Freedom has been evident through its initiatives, including vision care programs, scholarships for local students, and various community development projects. And whereas the New Freedom Lions Club, clubs numerous contributions have helped to create a stronger, more vibrant, and inclusive New Freedom community, promoting the spirit of service and unity. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the residents and leaders of New Freedom Borough, hereby recognize and honor the New Freedom Lions Club for ninety years of dedication and service to our community. Be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be presented to the New Freedom Lions Club as a token of our deepest gratitude and admiration for their ninety years of selfless service, and that it be shared with the wider community as a testament to their outstanding contributions to the borough of New Freedom. In witness whereof, we the undersigned do hereby acknowledge and celebrate the ninetieth anniversary of the New Freedom Lions Club, and we express our heartfelt gratitude for their significant and enduring contributions to our community. And our motto is?
We serve.
We serve. We get this, Patty. Thanks for all you do. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to take that short time to, to do that. They're a very important part of our, perhaps of our local community, and I sometimes don't know what in the world we'd do without them.
I agree.
So thank you for your ninety years of dedicated service.
Thank you. And anyway, I just, one other quick thing to finish up. Keep in mind that that, the tax that we were talking about for EMS represents twenty-seven dollars per home. So.
That's a couple cups of Starbucks.
And for that, you get ambulances and a chase truck and hopefully better, better staffing, or at least longer term staffing. People might stay a little longer, so.
Medication, trips. Confusion.
Thanks. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions on that fire and EMS section? Okay, moving on to planning and zoning, this, these line items relate to any kind of plan review and any kind of zoning hearing board legal and advertising fees that, that come before the borough. Any questions then on that or anything else on page two? Okay, moving on to page three. At the top is the contribution to the SPCA and then the other animal control services that we pay for. Just a little bit of information, the SPCA is looking at a countywide animal control officer. That would be basically a cooperative agreement between all municipalities in York County. So chances are, this is not gonna happen for twenty-twenty-four, but as we look to the future, twenty-twenty-five and beyond, this is a possibility. There are a couple animal control officers in the area. One of them is basically closing up shop at the end of twenty-four. She does not want to provide those services anymore. She was talked into staying on for twenty-twenty-four by the SPCA as a separate business, but she is done providing those services as of the end of twenty-four. So they're looking at a breakdown of all those costs across the municipalities in York County. Preliminary numbers, obviously at this point, because they need personnel, they need equipment, they need obviously additional space at the SPCA, but it is something that we're going to have to look into as we move into twenty-four and get into budget season for twenty-five, so just a heads up at this point.
Is, um, is there any way that we know how many calls they make to New Freedom Borough?
They have a little bit of a breakdown through our animal control officer. We don't get a-
Like an annual report or anything like that?
Not that I've seen, no. I'll try to get a hold of something, though.
Just, just for, just out of curiosity, I wonder-
Sure.
What, what kind of stuff goes into that?
Yeah. Okay, moving into highway maintenance, questions in that section? Okay, hearing none. Snow removal. Again, this was mentioned in the budget message, but basically at this point, we have a substantial stockpile from the lack of winter weather in twenty-two into, into twenty-three, so hopefully depending on the weather, we'll go into the twenty-three, twenty-four season with a substantial stockpile and have, not really have the need to order additional material as we get into twenty-four. Questions? Okay, going to streetlights. Again, that expenditure was pulled out last year into Highway Eight, so that is zeroed out for twenty-four as well. And then just any repairs that would be, need to be made out of that other expenditure line item. Roadway projects, as we indicated earlier, don't really have any money budgeted out of the general fund for twenty-twenty-four. We're looking to use a hundred thousand dollars of liquid fuels fund, but that could change depending on additional needs. Onto the recreation category?
Do you consider, sorry, would you reconsider repaving like the municipal lot? Is that a maintenance issue or is that a roadway, would that be, that a roadway project?
That'd be maintenance, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Did we spend all our ARBA money? I thought we still had some left.
We do. It was programmed for stormwater work, which was completed, and it was programmed for the crosswalks, which we're still waiting on final bill for that.
And don't forget that concrete sidewalk across the-
Yeah, they just had the, the PennDOT inspection for the signals last week, and that did pass, so we're still, we haven't-
What was the park repair and maintenance? This year was thirteen thousand seven, and next year it was cut in half.
Yeah, the large cost driver there was additional safety surfacing from Arch Goodfellow Park.
Safety surfacing?
Yeah, the rubber mulch.
And then the regional recreation, zero, and then budgeting $17,500 next year?
Correct. That's the Southern York County Regional Recreation Commission. That would be the startup, the $3.50 per person.
So that's that per capita tax of $17,000?
Right. It's not a tax, it's just a per capita allocation.
You settled on it was a tax last?
It's not a tax. If it was a tax, it would have to be allocated as a separate line item on your tax bill.
And again, at the very bottom, the community center expenses. I've been saying this for a long time, that they're hidden in the general fund. All those community center expenses should be in the community center expenditures, and transfers should be made from the general fund over to there. And I don't know how you expect for '24 only $30,000, when it was nearly $68,000 this year, how less than half?
Well, $23,000 of that was the access control system in '23.
$30,000 was nearly like HVAC repairs, like, you know, so... Half or more of the expenditures for the community center are coming out of this general fund, and they should be over in the community center expenditures. For a true representation.
Can you explain why you say they're hidden when you can clearly read that that line item says "community center expense"?
Because when you look at the treasures report monthly, and you're looking at, you know, 85, 95 things in the general fund, and you gotta look for 990 in there, it would be much more transparent if all expenditures were right in the community center, because, you know, you're not putting other things in other funds, but for some reason, you want to put the community center in the general fund. The community center has its own fund, it has its own expenses, its own expenditures and revenues. That's where it should be, to have a more clear accounting for the actual cost of that community center.
Okay. So how do you anticipate funding those expenditures out of the community center fund?
I had already said, put them in there, and if it is in the red, then you make a transfer from the general fund over to there, so you can more clearly account for it, so you're not having to go between all these funds and try and add up how much the community center has. It's all in the expenditures of the community center. It would be, it would be all right there.
How is a transfer? How is a transfer more transparent than an actual line item showing the expenditure? A transfer, to me, makes it sound like it's more hidden than an actual expenditure line item.
No, because to go find community center expenses, I've got to go through the general fund, through untold...
But you would still have to go through the general fund to find that transfer.
But the expenditures would be there.
The expenditures are there now, under line 452-990.
No, because some are over here in the general fund, and some are over here in the community center fund expenditures. So you gotta go find them in different spots. They should all be going into the one fund that they are accounted for, the community center.
But you just said you wanted a transfer.
If it's in the red?
Which it is.
Maybe we could get it up by making more fair leases and have revenue coming in that could cover it. However, that's not happening right now, and it would be more clear...
Is your project question then, that you want to increase the cost of the community center expense from $30,000 to some other number?
I am saying it should be accounted for in the community center expenses. It is the community center. It has its own fund.
So you're okay with the $30,000?
I'm not saying I'm okay with any of this. I'm saying it needs to quit being hidden in the general fund, and please put in the fund where those expenses are generated.
Again, it's not hidden.
It is.
It's hidden in plain sight. It's right here. There's no, I don't, I don't understand, you know, we're supposed to be talking about how much we want in these, in these buckets of money. We're not supposed to be analyzing the accounting system.
So you're gonna go find it, you're gonna go through how many pages of all this, all this little tiny print to go find expenses in, in there? When you, when you wanna, at the end of there, if you want to know how much the community center was expenses, you're gonna have to go through 12 of these, through all these lines, through all these pages to try and figure it out. That's what I'm saying. It's not transparent, it's not clear. There's a fund for it, and that's where it should be.
Somebody has to make a motion, I guess. To move.
Any other questions on page three? Questions on page four?
Do you by chance know when the last time the donation to the library was changed or altered? I know that might take a little bit of research.
As long as we've been here.
Yeah, it's quite a few years that it's been set at $10,000, yeah.
And before.
What is the $81,000 transferred to Capital Reserve Fund for?
That's the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund for vehicles and equipment.
And again, here's another community center fund transfer, $5,000 out of this account from the general fund last year.
Well, that's where you said you want to see things. That's why it's shown zero for next year. As we talk about debt service, there was a mention earlier about the debt service. We do have an option to restructure that debt service to save $80,000 to $100,000 a year. However, that means you're extending that debt service timeframe, that term, and you're losing an interest rate of 2% basically, to the current rate of probably 6% or 7%. So it's not advisable, but if you're worried about cash flow, it's an option.
When does that 2% go to variable?
It does not go to a variable rate.
That's unlocked, all right.
It's locked in forever until that's paid off?
I believe there was, on the term of that, I believe there was a 10-year lock. After that, you would look to, it goes to...
A variable rate 65% of the prime?
After which you would refinance, and every single debt service is always refinanced before the debt occurs.
And in 2031, I wonder what the rates will be?
Can't be more than now.
No, don't say that. Don't say that. I remember 18%.
I do, too.
You're not going to get a bank general obligation note that's not going to have a cap on the fixed rate. The only way to get around that would be to do a bond issue, and you're about tripling your cost on issuance at that point. Keep in mind, that money was borrowed because there was projects allocated, but there was not cash on hand to pay for.
Maybe we should have thought about those projects, I guess, at that time in '21.
A lot of that was, a lot of that was before.
The council prior.
Was done way before.
And we got stuck with it.
Not that it was taken out in '21.
It's taken out.
Closed in '21.
Yeah, it was closed in '21.
What was the total of that, again? What was drawn for that, to pay for those projects that wasn't money for?
The draw on the general fund was around $1 million.
But the three funds together was how much?
I'd have to pull... The principal portion... The refinance portion of the general obligation point was 1.6. That was refinancing debt from 2012.
Which was how much? What was the rate in 2012?
I don't, I don't have that.
That's okay.
So the total principal, or the total debt on the general fund was 3.5. The total debt on the sewer fund was 3.4, with a refinance portion of $480,000, and the total debt in the water fund was 1.8, with a refinance of $183,000.
It was close to $8 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is it a fair statement to say that you've been, or us as a borough, have been playing catch-up for the last few years?
Yes.
Would it say at the accurate, that's why for three years in a row, taxes are going to be raised?
It's a portion of it, absolutely. When you're looking at debt service at $300,000...
Watch us out at one. You're looking at over for the payment this year, so over $600,000.
But you can't, you're talking about a general, you gotta break those other, those are utility billing, so that's separate. You gotta talk about real estate taxes if you're looking at, you just mentioned the tax increase, so we gotta focus on that portion of the debt service. Are you corrected that it is a total? Yes, but it's split between those funds.
Driver.
In general fund, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if we had the money, I mean, there would not be a tax. That's 100% accurate.
You should write it.
Say again?
So we're getting the ship righted, I guess, in a sense.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions on general fund expenditures?
Just, I just saw on the Refuge Room back, so accounting and auditing phase for the annual independent audit is only $2,100?
That's just allocated in general fund. We split that out.
Over all of the funds?
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be a total if you add all that up for all the funds. Okay, moving on to the Refuge Fund.
So the salaries for the office was zero, but this year is $4,518?
Yeah, we're programming a portion of the billing clerk's salary because it's part of the expenditure.
Where did it come from before?
It would have been split between general, sewer, and water. So we're just pulling a portion of that out.
Has it changed?
For Refuge, for trash?
Yeah, because we bill and collect.
Is there anywhere, anywhere on the budget that it notates accounts receivable? We didn't get there yet, but I see our accounts receivable, all those are, do we anticipate collection, and that goes into revenue, or we just wait until we get it and it goes into the...
Well, we're cash basis, so there's no accrual of our receivables. So we're only booking that revenue when we receive it.
Makes sense, okay, thanks.
The $708,617 for the Refuge recycling disposable. The letter we got that's going to add another $16,000 plus to our bill this year is already in there?
That's correct.
How much is the Refuge bill going up this year in '24 coming?
We have in the budget that it would go up an additional $5.
And then, and then '25, $10 more?
When we looked at the bid last year, there was an allocation that that was going to have to be increased throughout the term of the contract. So yeah, as we get to that point, it might be $5, it might be $10. And that's all depending, again, on that tipping fee. If the tipping fee increases, we're gonna have to make that up somewhere.
Is it $85 right now a quarter?
It is.
So we'll go up to 90.
That's in the budget, that's correct.
And then probably in '25, I remember writing down 10. So it's kind of gonna, close to 125.
Other questions in the Refuge Fund? Stormwater fund, we have nothing programmed for '24. Obviously, that fund needs to be built up before we can start pulling money out of it for conveyance system improvement projects. Everybody good if we're going the water fund?
Sure.
Page seven?
Non-uniform pension water, this year is $36,700, '24 is going all the way down to $17,445.
Yeah, let me pull our actual on that, because what we do is we allocate that money. You never really know exactly what the per-unit allocation is going to be, and when I say per unit, talking about actual employees enrolled in the pension plan during the previous year for at least six months. So that number changes, and then the per-unit allocation from the Commonwealth changes every year as well. So what we try to do is proportion that out based on those employees that are in those separate departments. So actually, our pension state aid in the water fund this year was $24,454, and...
For '23?
Yeah. Yeah, so we actually, that $36,000 number is actual right now, $24,454.
Is it gonna be $36,700 before the end of the year?
No, no, that's a one-time payment. So we get our allocation usually late September, early October from the state, and then you have to pay that into your pension plan within 30 days, based on your MMO that's approved every year by council with your minimum municipal obligation.
So you just made a total for '23 that was over here?
Yeah, way over.
But next year, you anticipate $17,000?
Yeah, and again, that's all dependent on our MMO, which we broke out. So our MMO is actually decreasing for next year, so we have that proportionally broken out between the different funds. The good news is, historically, the allocation from the Commonwealth, from the state, for that per-unit basis, has funded the borough's MMO, the minimum municipal obligation, for multiple years.
And the engineering for the water, estimated $37,000. And the engineering for the water estimated 37,000 this year, going up to 60,000 next year?
Yeah, so that would be that 30,000 that was shown on that first page of the budget message, and any additional engineering that we would need throughout the year for the water system.
Do we have any possibility of getting away from York Water?
Contract's over.
Can't believe you asked that.
We tried.
We made a motion for him to send a letter for a solicitor, and then that never happened.
Oh, it did.
No, it happened.
It did, and we were told.
Yeah.
We were told by York Water that unless it benefits York Water financially, they have no desire to meet with New Freedom Borough.
No, you came back and said, to save the borough money, you didn't have the solicitor draft the letter, you made a phone call directly.
Right, so it still happened. And I talked to...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, the council wanted a letter sent, but that didn't happen. You called, made a phone call directly. It's been hashed out.
Anyway.
No, so that, we need to provide.
Is there any, any possibility, there's no, nothing, everyone's reviewed the contract, and there's no possibility at all of getting away from it?
No, at this point, we need to provide notice in 2026 for termination in 2028.
Please put that on your calendar.
It is. Actually, I already did. And at this point, that termination letter would hopefully trigger at least them coming to the table to have a discussion. Again, maybe it's not that we need to take 30,000 gallons a day, maybe it needs to be there on an emergency basis, maybe we can take 10,000 gallons a day just to keep the line active, but it's clear that we don't need to take in that, but we should have it there as an emergency backup should the need arise.
Yeah, I understand, and it's just we're running away 100,000 dollars a year.
Correct, because that...
Million dollars total, yeah.
That, um...
A million dollars total over, over that contract.
That was pre all of us.
That, um...
Doesn't matter, still. Well, I know.
That rate is...
Fact that we can't get out of it.
Also subject to any York Water rate increases, which you can see in the budget right now.
You don't think they'd be willing to at all negotiate with the water level issues that they've been having, Redmond being down and...
So if you read the agreement, it basically says that in that case, you know, there, there can be some alteration of that minimum.
Is that a temporary alter, alteration?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not permanent.
Based off of what they see fit?
Yeah. It's really not, it's not.
I mean, I, I would... Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Donnie, but in talking with our engineering firm, Erica, you just said it was a million dollars in 10 years, right? So just the other year, we talked about putting the tank, another tank up where the slider tank sits. That price was over $3 million to put in, where we were quoted by a previous engineer, it was a million and a half. That gave you all sticker shop. So in 10 years, you might be spending a million dollars on getting York Water, but we're not spending 3 million in one year to put a new tank in that by having York Water, we don't need that tank. So we're, we're not in the red on that, we're, we're still okay.
Is that what DEP came back with, was, engineering-wise?
That's what Arrow, that's what Arrow's telling us, that with that backup, we're allowed to take so many, like, I think it's like 200,000 gallons a day if we had to. But right now, we're contracted for 90, 900,000 a month, 30,000 a day. So it's actually a safeguard, having that hooked up. Yes, it looks like a lot of money, but you're not spending 3 million dollars on a tank that you wouldn't need.
Maybe felt a little better, I guess.
Is slider tank out of service right now?
Yes.
And you had talked about a year ago, it would be another year before the grant for that, that tank. Have you got any updates on that slider tank grant?
That wasn't a grant for the slider tank, that was a grant for improvements at the wells.
I had down, it was like a 1 million something grant for that slider tank. Somebody was supposed to tell us.
We would need, that would be the difference in what the original debt service was looked at compared to what it actually cost, but there's not, that doesn't even qualify for a small water project, because that has to be half a million dollars or less.
I'll have to look at my notes, I don't know why I have that.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we haven't, we haven't looked at any grain opportunities for that tank because there doesn't seem to be a need to rebuild another tank in that area, but...
And how long's that tank been down?
Probably about four years.
And I want to say, well, I've only been here, not even two, in January, I had asked if York Water went away and never, ever came back, would we have a problem? And you had said no.
I, I feel we don't have a problem, but I'd like the engineers to verify that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying you gotta close off the valve and never get it, but just, you know, as needed.
But the, the stipulation with DEP is you have to have so much storage. And they're talking, and DEP requires that we would probably have to have 99.9%, we would have to have another tank. If we didn't, they're using the York Water connection as a backup storage.
Do you have to have a tank the same size? I mean, with these quantities?
It all depends on what DEP comes back and tells us.
Yeah.
But with the, with the York Water connection, we are meeting that criteria, where we're not spending 3 million dollars to put a tank in. And in 10 years, you, you just said about a million dollars. So keep the York Water connection, deal with what we're dealing with on that aspect, and keep moving forward to, hopefully in the next contract renewal, that we can drop the amount of water that we have to take in.
And how many tanks do we currently use?
One.
One. And how big is that tank?
750,000.
750,000. Is it made out of the same material as the slider tank?
Yeah, it's a fiberglass line tank.
Fiberglass?
It's fiberglass line tank. The tank up at the slider tank is a metal tank with a, like epoxy paint.
And because it wasn't turned properly, it eroded inside?
No, it's, that happens over years, just the water being in there and stuff, that the paint just wears out.
Was it about a 30-year-old tank?
Just put it in back in '82.
The tank, the tank that you have, the, the new one is a steel tank, it just, it has a glass coating.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
The one in use right now?
Yes.
Any other questions in the water fund, page seven? Questions on page eight to wrap up the water fund?
The contracted services for water, the 25,000, that's a portion of...
Uh, so that relates to any of the IT services for the office and any of the services for the system as well?
Cybersecurity included in that?
That's correct. So that even relates to our billing software and, and updates for that, and annual subscriptions? Any follow-up questions in water fund? Okay, sewer fund.
Capital improvements, 226,000 this year, next year 750,000?
Correct, that is phase one. We anticipate that we will receive the permit and begin some initial construction in 2024. We're estimating that to be around 500,000 dollars.
This is that 3 million dollar phase one?
Correct.
That they authorize? Our portion of that 3 million is 750, 150?
No, this is, this would be expenditures for the what we anticipate in that calendar year of that project. Again, that, that hasn't been bid. You know, we're, we're just estimating about a half million dollars for 2024. But that's dependent, we might not even have a permit in order to start construction next year.
Is that another driver, that large increase of like almost 500,000 there of this tax increase?
Again, this is sewer fund, this is paid with sewer revenues, not tax revenues.
So is this a drawdown to pay for this? Did you, or is this from a '21 note? Is this another note?
Well, the New Freedom portion of this project will be paid from the 2021 general obligation note and supplemented with sewer use fees from New Freedom. But the other portion of that is coming from the member municipalities, Railroad and Shrewsbury Borough and the authority.
Above the 700.
Oh, but that'll occur in '25. So we're just pulling out what we anticipate of that 3 million dollar project occurring next year. We're not anticipating the entire 3 million dollars, just a half million dollars, and again, that might not happen. But keep in mind, you know, you're talking about those taxes, your water and sewer funds are special revenue funds. You can't intermix tax revenues and user fees in those funds. So there has to be a clear delineation, and, and that's why in your audit report, those are broken out as special revenue funds.
So that means they're self-sustaining with, with the input, with the revenues and the expenses?
They need to be, yes.
How did the liability insurance get nearly cut in half down to 12,000?
So you'll see that in all the accounts, it's because in '23, we actually we paid in early '23, we paid '23's premium, and we're trying to catch up and make sure that we get the bills early, so we're gonna actually pay '24's premium in '23. So we're gonna have a double expenditure in one year so that we can get back on board to a single renewal expenditure per year.
Same with the property insurance?
That's correct, yeah.
49,000 this year, down to 25 next year?
Yes.
Health insurance is on the rise. Other municipalities contribute to that?
Yes, so on that first section there, which is the shared sewer expense, the 429.000, the portion of that, so any of the capital improvements are broken out on that percentage base that we talked about earlier to Railroad and Shrewsbury. The rest of those operating expenditures are based on flow. So how much flow is coming from Shrewsbury Borough Authority? How much flow is coming from New Freedom Borough, and how much flow is coming from Railroad? And that's billed out. And that's billed out based on those percentages. Your next subcategory there, where it says shared sewer expense partial, that is labor and benefits. And how we break that out is we take the employees' time that they spent at the treatment plant compared to how much time they spent in New Freedom's collection system. And we build that out separately. So, um, you know, if the employee spent 90% of their time at the treatment plant, we're billing 90% of that employee's time to the other municipalities and New Freedom as well. And then we multiply that, again, by the flow percentage, so it breaks down, it's a multiple multiplication factor in that. But that's how we're properly billing the other municipalities for the employee's time. And their benefits, as you indicated.
So their health insurance, 188,000 for '24, that is just New Freedom's portion?
No, no, that is total.
Total.
That's total.
We're gonna get some of that back by that breakdown.
Absolutely, yeah.
How do we know how much?
Well, that changes by a couple percentage points every year based on, again, two factors. One...
As, as a council, how do we know how much of that is gonna be our?
Reflect back to the proportionate share that was done.
Earlier, or last?
Yeah, yeah. The two are about a year apart when you really look at it, so the proportionate share that we'll do in '24 is '23's numbers, because we have actual numbers. But you can use that as a projection forward to say the employees spent 88% of the time at the treatment plant. Shrewsbury Borough's flow percentage was 52%. So that's how you're breaking those numbers out. It's, it's... It was challenging for me to wrap my head around when I started the proportionate share report, but it kind of makes sense now, and we'll...
Do you know what the proportionate share for New Freedom is from that plant?
As it relates to capital expenditures, or as it relates to flow?
I guess...
Well, so capital expenditures is 37? Yeah, I, I believe it's about...
Shrewsbury's is a lot more.
Yeah, there's 60, 63, that's about right now.
Yeah, it's, it's about 35, 37% of capital expenditures for operating figure 48 to even as high as 50%.
But that goes by, that goes by flow.
That goes by flow, absolutely. So those two subcategories on page nine all relate to expenditures that we're billing out for then as part of the proportionate share report. And then as you move into page 10, that first section really relates to New Freedom's 100% of our operations and the collection system repair.
So I see general obligation of again, sewer, 243,000. Is that all New Freedom, or are the users of that plant giving some towards that 243,000?
That would be all New Freedom, because they're gonna pay that capital expenditure separately. Now, the hope is that one, we get the grant from Commonwealth Financing Authority, and we're able to reduce that overall expenditure for everybody involved. If that's the case, council could consider taking the proceed and putting that right back on the loan.
Did the other users of the sewer plant have to take out loans for this phase one upgrade?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Wasn't that why Shrewsbury took the Penn Vest loan?
I believe they did take a Penn Vest loan. I'm not sure, I believe that was for the sludge press, I'm not sure that they took any additional borrowings going into '24 for phase one.
I think they had taken that out ahead of time. And then if they could, they paid it out of the general fund, and it was a drawdown.
But they can't...
I guess for Penn Vest, wasn't it?
Again, they can't pay... Again, they can't pay, can't pay a sewer fund note with general fund proceeds.
I don't know what happened, but I was at the meeting and it sure looked that way.
It's okay, case zero.
Question, to get the proportionate fees, we go back revenue, we go back to the revenues and sewer user fees? Is that the same percentage?
Correct, yeah. What you're showing, seeing there for New Freedom is what we're actually billing the residents and property owners in New Freedom. What you're seeing there for Shrewsbury and Railroad is what we're billing them out for the proportionate share report. And we took these estimated numbers for '24, plugged them into a quick calculator for the proportionate share using the time, using approximate flow percentages, and that's how we get those numbers of revenue for next year. Other questions on that page? Okay, recreation fund expenditures. As you noted earlier, I believe there was one addition following the Recreation Commission meeting earlier this month where they asked for an additional $1,000 to be programmed for celebrations?
Trying to see if I, I wanna make sure that number is right.
Celebrations of what?
Well, they had, what they had talked about at the last meeting is they had a, basically like a social after one of the pickleball, or with the pickleball group. That money was used for appetizers at Vortex. So they visited a local business.
That was just one thing, though. There are others that they.
That's the only event that I know of that they've had. It's the only one they referenced at the meeting.
I guess I have to ask the question, why, why would that pay for a party for?
What they would choose to do.
They paid 169.91.
I'm sorry?
Sorry? They paid $169.91 for the expensive view of that and no alcohol purchase.
Yeah, no, it's.
That's from the report that we got here for the recreation.
I just wanna, you trying to pull up Mary Ann's email?
Yeah.
I, I just wanna make sure I understand. So pickleball players pay 76 cents a day to play and they treat them to a party that we have to pay for?
Came out of the rec fund, I believe. It's out of their own money?
But they're asking for an extra $1,000 to be put in the budget?
They're on their own budget, yes.
But they're calling it celebrations, right?
Would it be funded like out of, out of the money that rec collects from the pickleball players?
It would be by interpretation of it, yes. Their budget comes out of their money that they generate.
Yeah, so following their report, they asked for concerts in the park to be programmed at $2,700 and party celebrations to be programmed at $1,000. I believe in the past, we utilized line 452, 341, which shows $5,000 for 2024 as the concerts in the park. So we can break that out. It's not a big deal to add another line item to show concerts.
Yeah, that's probably.
So those would be the two changes that the Rec Commission asked for. Any other questions on that?
I'm sorry, yes?
I have a question concerning, since we're talking budget and we're talking recreation and we're talking all this stuff. And in my position, planning the biggest event for New Freedom in December, whereas we don't talk budget and we don't ask for any money, yet other people ask for money or they put money in for this and that and the other thing. Whereas we fund, or we go out here and we pretty much are knocking on doors and asking for sponsorships and all this kind of stuff when it's an event for this community. So if other people, Recreation Council or whomever else can get money for parties and this kind of thing, where should we lie or should we, we be included in the budget? For instance, we're doing a reception after the parade at the community center at our expense. But it's for the community. So I don't, I don't understand.
But we're giving you the auditorium, the community center free, correct?
That doesn't cover anything. We could, we normally do it outside and we could very much still do it outside.
I know, I know rec just did their, their Veterans Day and they went out and they collected all kinds of prizes, donations, money in order to not use community funds and taxpayer funds.
But taxpayer funds pay for the prizes and the candy at their parade.
I, Mar, I don't think it would be unreasonable for you to come to council and ask for a donation for the Christmas parade. I'm not sure. I think it would be the same as we would do for like rec, which would be in the $250 range. But I don't think that would be inappropriate at all, my own opinion.
Do you use any of your expenses as a business write-off?
No.
Where do the profits go? Are there any profits? You have to show us expense and revenue, I would think, before we'd be willing to look at that.
When you say, explain to me, when you say profits?
Expenses and revenues, did you make money or did you lose money?
We lose money, of course, but we don't look at it that way. Like I always say when I present this thing, we just look at for the people. You know, we get ours back on the other end, you know? It's donations for us, you know? So, but I just hear this and I'm just thinking, well, wait a minute. Something, there should be something else, especially if it is not for our benefit. You know, and you're talking thousands of people that come out for this event and now they're gonna come to the community center. You know, we're thankful for what we get from our sponsors, we really are. You know, and they don't mind helping us. But I think that, you know, like Andy was saying, you know, we think council should say, okay, well, here's something towards the community event. But like I said at the last meeting, if they, if it does happen, we're grateful. But if it does not happen, it's still gonna go on. That's just how, that's just how it is.
I have a feeling a motion may be made when we get to the recon meeting.
Okay, we are on to capital reserve fund expenditures. What's shown here is $80,000 for the replacement of a pickup truck. We are going to forego that for 2024. So we're going to look at replacing that in future years?
I'm sorry, is it, so you got 40, oh, I see. So you split up, you split it up between the water and sewer, right?
Water and highway, yeah.
Basically, we're, I'm sorry.
Basically, we're coming down to a zero on that.
Right.
That's correct.
And if I can just add that I am so willing to offer to get vehicles at cost for the borough for EMS.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Get vehicles at cost. So I'm.
For EMS?
EMS, and if the borough needs a work truck because of my connections within fleet, there's, basically we'll get it at what the motor company would sell it for, what they have in it.
I would try to get in touch with the president of fire company or find out when the next EMS meeting is and let them know that. Because I think they're probably in the middle of trying to get a new ambulance right now.
I'll be more than happy.
The chase truck is on the table too. Well, the chase truck, yeah.
I can do that and if you guys need to get a work truck at some point in time, please just let me know when you're ready and I'll be more than happy to do it.
We have your name, address, phone number, email?
I don't know if I gave all that, but I'll write it down for you.
Please. Thank you very much, Mar.
I'm not sure I apologize here. Eighty, the truck, but you're gonna take two funds or two sewer?
It was just shown out of the capital reserve. So it's completely separate fund. That's the fund that's getting the allocations from the other funds to, for the purchase of vehicles and equipment. Yeah, but we're just showing as two line items because in essence, that vehicle would be utilized by both the highway and water departments, so.
You say it comes out of that fund, but it's still, it's coming out of the general fund to create this fund. So it's still money being taken away.
The general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, they're all funding the capital reserve fund.
Yeah, it's still money being taken away.
Yes, but it's money being put back to properly plan for vehicles and equipment. So we're flatlining expenditures and programming.
So you're gonna take the 80K off?
Out of the capital reserve fund. Okay, looking at the Highway Aid Fund, again, as we indicated, we're paying the street lighting expenditure out of that account. And we did include $100,000 for street improvement projects, which is not a lot. We won't be able to obviously get the whole list done, but we're able to peck away at it a little bit.
Electric is the actual bill for Med Head?
Yep. Yeah, we got multiple bills each month for the street lighting, but that's the cumulative cost to the borough for street lighting. Other questions on Highway E? Pretty simple. Okay, and last fund, community center fund expenditures on page 14. Any questions on those two subcategories?
Well, just again, you're showing the budget, 68,000. The true budget for that community center is over 100,000. Is that real listed HVAC service, 6,000?
To get this bucket.
Yeah, I mean, out of that fund? Yes, out of the general fund to pay for those additional, no. We all know that that system has multiple issues and is outdated.
And you took out that 80,000 and perhaps that might help pay for part of the HVAC?
For the, for the truck, but that, that was capital reserve.
More and more, oh, that was on the highway? So we can't.
That was capital reserve fund.
Oh, okay, we can't transfer that.
No.
And the cleaning is 15,000, that's gonna be over 17,000.
I'd like to talk about that later on in the agenda. We have some new initiatives that we'd like to discuss.
What's the next step?
Yeah, unless, does anybody have any other community center questions? Just to, you know.
I just have one question. Comes, always comes back to pickleball. How come pickleball gets to use the place 26 days a month and they pay $200? But like tonight volleyball is there, they use it 12 nights and they have to pay $1,080. Field hockey.
They have next month where they're not allowed to use it, 11 days out of the month, I believe. So they're still paying the same amount, each individual, but they can't use it.
They pay $20 a month. Rec pays 200 a month. Volleyball uses it 12 nights and has to pay $1,080. Field hockey pays $30 an hour. It's really a huge discrepancy.
So they're, they're two different groups. One's, one's run through the borough with rec, the other one's a private entity running.
So 200 to 1,000? I mean, if, if the community center is losing money, then possibly we shouldn't be giving it away.
Well, you know, when they get the rec director, it's gonna be used for free, that's in the contract. So you're not even gonna get your 200 then.
Cause the amount of times that they have pickleball for $20, they're paying 83 cents, actually 76.
That's close to the square footage, tasteful occasions, paying for a kitchen, full use of a private business, so.
Well, then we're even.
So all, so all the, all the activities should come under rec and then they would only have to pay the $200 instead of the 1,000?
No, they can't. We had that situation with the cornhole tournament. The guy wanted to do cornhole in there and do it under the auspices of joining rec. And everybody said, no, not gonna happen. Why? Because he was doing it for profit.
But volleyball isn't doing it for profit?
Well, wasn't the community center gonna make money off it as well?
Oh, for what?
Wasn't he gonna pay to use the facility?
Well, you can't, you can't do pickleball, pickleball and cornhole at the same time.
He, he wanted to do it through rec for like a, basically at a discounted rate, but then he was also gonna make money off of it, running, running the event.
He does this as a business.
Volleyball makes not one penny.
But volleyball, volleyball is being held by a private person who is running the facility. Pickleball is falling under a recreation program.
That's what I'm saying. So to allow or apply to go through it through rec.
And they have been for what, 30, 30 some years?
If you're, if you're gonna have your recreation group run programs, then you're gonna have someone privately come in to rent the facility, which you, the borough, is charging as a fee to rent the facility. So you can't have it both ways.
Yes, the question is, is anyone approached the person who runs volleyball and asked them if they wanted to come under rec?
Well, my question is that we have to at least charge enough to cover expenses. The thing that you're saying, like she's saying is that the, running the water, sewer, electric for pickleball is costing money. So there's got to be a balance where we at least break even, where it's not costing us to have an.
where it's not costing us to have an event there. I'm... I'm sorry, I may be speaking poorly.
It's fine, okay.
But I think that's kind of the gist of it, that we can't rent this out to, even if they're under Rec, and lose money. It... We have to at least be at a break-even point. And that's where something's got to be adjusted. Where for volleyball, they're obviously not losing money for running the lights and things.
Well, that's because they charge a lot more. I mean, to play volleyball costs you... You can't actually have them.
To your question, um, the water and sewer usage at that community center, does any of the leaseholders pay for that?
So they're renting it without paying for a portion of the gas, electric, water sewer?
Oh, utilities is supposed to be figured in there, but for sewer and water usage of that community center, do the taxpayers solely pay for that or do the leaseholders pay for that?
It's included. Water and sewer is included in their rent. Says in their lease, that's what... Right?
Right, but those utilities are owned by the borough.
Right.
So is there a water sewer bill for the...
So do they get a water and sewer bill?
Well, the borough does.
The borough owns the building.
And we get the water sewer bill.
Well, we don't create a bill for ourselves.
You have a for-profit business in there. Are they paying for the sewer and water usage that they use?
Especially a catering company, because they're going to need a lot of water.
Well, that's built into their rental agreement.
Is it?
What are... But I don't know if I can ask this, but what is it?
We talked about gas, electric, all that's built in.
Yeah, we need... We need to roll it back and have one at a time person speak. And it's not... I mean, the intent wasn't to go back and forth. But I... I... I did get the numbers for... I mean, field hockey pays sixty dollars a Monday for two hours. Volleyball pays five-hundred-and-forty for twelve nights, but it's two teams that are playing at the same time. So they're paying, uh, one thousand eighty dollars for their volleyball. Pickleball pays seven-sixty-nine a day. YMCA pickleball is ten dollars per person, per time. So I think... I think what the gist here is, is that we probably need to put together a small committee to come up with fees for the community center for all of these people. I mean, just because they're playing volleyball doesn't mean it's not a recreational activity. Just because they're playing field hockey doesn't mean... And whether or not it falls underneath the rec department, it really doesn't matter. We're still looking to have recreation for people in New Freedom. That was the whole intent. So I think that that's probably a committee that will form in our regular meeting. And just look at it and see what's fair. For an example, nonprofits normally pay half the going rate for the community center. I think it would be fair for... For everybody who's doing recreation to pay some percentage of a normal fee. But that could be up to many of us to decide. So we get a new budget out?
Yeah, what we can do is we can update, uh, the couple of changes that were made this evening and get a new summary sheet out. But at this point, we need to kind of determine if we're... You're holding another meeting or if you're going to look to authorize advertisement of this budget.
That's a really good question.
I always have a question. It says for the rec director, the twenty-twenty-four budget. It says the total compensation package with salary is a hundred and thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars to start. You said that it wasn't part of the budget, but it says twenty-four budget at the top. Is it in here or not in here?
You referenced a hundred and thirteen thousand as total compensation package, but you need to break out. That includes education and training. That includes supplies, postage, cellular service, events, programming, supplies, fuel, everything else. So it's not the compensation package of that individual.
Oh, that's going to cost to have that person...
No.
A hundred and thirteen thousand?
No, you're not breaking out the programming. Programming is for community events, community programs and supplies, which is seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars of that. You're not breaking out the office expenditures.
Right, it's everything.
But you called it a compensation package for the rec director. It's not a compensation package.
Salary, everything, to have that person sit in New Freedom to do programs is going to cost a hundred and thirteen thousand.
No, again, you're not listening to me.
Okay, let's try again. What am I not listening to?
The programming would assume the expenditures that are in the recreation fund right now for programming, for supplies, for events.
That's a cost, right?
That's a cost, but if you're talking about tennis, if you're talking about pickleball, if you're talking about events, they're all income generating, correct?
Most...
And did you look down at the bottom of the sheet where it says revenue from programming and events of twenty thousand dollars?
Well, you're hoping...
Well, just like you're hoping... You're anticipating that you're going to spend seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars on programming and at events.
You're the one that came up with these numbers, not me. I'm just saying, here, it's a total. There's a whole administration...
Right, but you're skewing... You're putting words into something to make it seem like it's a compensation package and that they're sitting there for a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and doing nothing. That's not the case.
We'll do it this way. Administration, ninety-one thousand, one hundred dollars. Office, three thousand, one hundred dollars. Programming, seventeen thousand, five hundred. Transportation fuel, one thousand, two hundred and fifty. Miscellaneous, five hundred. Total, one hundred, thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that not split with Shrewsbury Township?
Right, and of that, New Freedom Borough is going to pay seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Well...
We talked about that before.
...is going to be stepped down every year.
But the hope is, and again, it's a hope...
Yes, hope.
The hope is, is the programming fees are going to cover. If we get to a point, four years down the road, and there aren't any program fees because of the... It just didn't work out, then we have to lay a person off and we move on. But right now, the hope is, and what the reason that we went after the grant, was to have more recreation for more people, more skill levels, more age groups in New Freedom, PA. That's why we're doing this.
Et cetera, and not just New Freedom, correct?
Yes, that's true.
I mean, there's a lot of possibilities for the township.
Absolutely.
Tennis courts, they've got thorough things, swings, playground equipment.
And there's... There's an un...
Fields.
An unknown amount of money that we could pull in because we're teaming with Shrewsbury Township. That makes us more attractive for grants, which will hopefully allow us to do the things in Marge Goodfellow Park that Rec has been wanting to do for... Since the last build. So this will give us an opportunity to go after those, that kind of grant money that would allow us to complete the park.
So there is, out of this, a hundred and thirteen thousand, there is seventeen thousand figured into our budget for year one.
Yeah, we reaped that.
Twenty-four, correct?
Out of the general fund, that's correct.
Out of the general fund. And then, because the first year will pay for the whole salary of the sixty thousand.
The first year?
And then next year, it'll pay seventy-five percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent, and then zero?
That's the way the grant is structured, that's correct.
That's what we voted on and that's what we...
But we're starting out at a hundred and thirteen thousand and we all know it's going up from there.
But we're not starting out at a hundred and thirteen. Our portion of it is seventeen-five.
You can say what you want. It's a hundred and thirteen thousand a year, but we know it's going to go up.
It says it right here. Hundred-and-twenty-two, four-twenty-five, we have coming in. Hundred-and-thirteen, four-fifty, we have going out. And we don't... We're only paying sixteen, four-nineteen.
Yes, but every year it's going to be going up.
It will change, exactly, yeah, but the program...
And we'll have the cost.
And we'll have more for the cost per person.
But the first year is not... It's not a hundred and thirteen thousand, four-fifty coming from any way.
That is the cost, though.
I agree with that.
That's all I'm saying. That is the cost.
We have a DCR circuit wire grant for sixty-two thousand, five hundred. There's... There's more things in here than just our...
Split with the township.
Yes, but that is the cost, that's all I'm saying.
I agree, but we have revenue sources, too.
So we hope.
Well, we... We're not even going to be able to do it without the grant, so...
Anyway, back to your question. We're... We're okay with the, uh... And the ladder truck is listed as a separate line item in the budget. Obviously, we're approving SRPV. I think everything is in the budget that we require. I think we need to look at it again from a funding standpoint to see if we do the EMS tax, if we do... How we... How we fund that? Do we fund it as a line item out of general? So I guess I would entertain a motion to... We really need to see the summary before we can make that determination, correct?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, I... I think we need to go back and we need to fine-tune some of those numbers that we discussed tonight. Uh, I think we need to look at those potential tax increases and how they impact with, you know, looking at this additional EMS funding. And, you know, just keep in mind, we have to have that ten-day public inspection period before a meeting, um, to properly advertise. So if you're looking at dates and things as you get into December, we just have to keep that in mind.
Do we want to set a continuation meeting?
Do you think it's necessary for those couple of things?
I guess we don't have to. I mean, we could just have covered it at the next meeting, but you're... You're going to be running out of time to advertise, right?
That's up to you. You want to do it?
Your... Yeah, your December meeting is December eleventh. So if you were to authorize advertisement the earliest, you could run that advertisement usually two to three days, depending on when it hits the paper. So, I mean, at that...